I've known Bonos since my birth.
Well, it's great that he's here. Welcome to the regular school board meeting for October 8th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Dirk Johnson.
Here.
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 Are there any agenda adjustments tonight?
There are no more agenda adjustments.
Thank you. Any announcements or comments?
None.
Any community input?
None.
Okay, that moves us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Sold.
Second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, we unanimously passed the consent agenda and that moves us to report and non-action items.
Wait a second, are we going to read the gifts?
Oh, yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Financial gifts from Megan Gangel, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, to Central Park elementary school for students in need. Financial gifts from Troy and Jennifer Shally to EDW Williams School for special education. A financial gift, Jose Carlos Villapando, okay, I'm going to pass that one, to EDW for students in need. A gift card from D'Amico and Partners to Fairview Community Center for the ISD 623 Walk/Run raffle. Two gift cards from Mavericks to Fairview Community Center for the ISD 623 Walk/Run raffle. A financial gift from Blue Cross Blue Shield, attention Cory Slosser, also for the ISD 623 Walk/Run, sorry, ISD 623 Walk/Run sponsorship difference. A financial gift from Kennedy and Graven, attention Maggie Wallner, to the Fairview Community Center, also for sponsorship. A financial gift from Delta Dento to Fairview Community Center for the Walk/Run sponsorship. And a financial gift from Lothar Companies to Fairview Community Center for ISD 623 Walk/Run sponsorship.
And continuing on, we have more donations to the ISD 623 Walk/Run raffle, coming from Chiante Grill, from Keys Cafe, from Tea Cup, and from Mud Slingers, and from The Good Acre. And let's see, those are a couple more, from Old Mexico and from Punch Pizza. We have a donation from Tim Martheler of Cameras for Students in Need, made to Roseville area schools, from Patricia Alexander to the Ross Food Shelf. And then we have food for the Courage Retreat donated by Gail Sullivan Berkey, Roseville area middle school. A cash gift for volleyball nets to the Little Canada, well, from the Little Canada Recreation Association to the Roseville area high school. A cash gift for the Ross Trapp team to the Roseville area high school from Troy and Christie Raverty, and from Dr. Daniel Leisney, a cash gift for the volleyball program to Roseville area high school. And finally, a gift of a Selmer clarinet for students in need from Sarah Peterson to Parkview Center School.
And we would like to thank our community for their generosity. That was an amazing list of different contributions. We greatly appreciate the support that we receive from our community. Now we're ready for reports and non-action items, and we have a summary of opportunity gap data with Jake Bondalinde.
Yes, thank you for having me this evening. I'm going to walk you through this new report that we have for you. It's actually a combination of reports that we have provided you in the past, and that you've seen some of the data over the past year, but just some of our markers of our progress and towards eliminating achievement gaps. And it goes beyond just achievement gaps. Oftentimes, we refer to opportunity gaps, expectation gaps, relationship gaps. We don't have markers for each of those different areas, but I want to acknowledge that it's just more than achievement gaps. And some of the charts will show our successes, while others will show some areas that we continue to need some improvement. I also want to say that when we, as Roseville area school staff, look at achievement gaps, we know that the onus of the change lies with us as the adults to interrupt our systems. So we don't want to construe that this is placing any blame on our students. Sometimes that is construed in a way that... I'm going to start off with talking through some of our MCA measures. So looking at this first slide, this is comparing our achievement gaps overall for the state of Minnesota. So that's the top left one. And that's looking at how are the achievement gaps, are they changing over time for the state? And that is just, it's not looking at proficiency, it's just looking at the difference between our students of color and American Indian students compared to white students, and is there any change in there? You can see that the gaps range from about nine percentage points to 37 percentage points, with the highest gaps for black and American Indian students. And you can see most of those gaps remain unchanged over time. And Roseville is in the bottom right-hand corner, and that's looking at our district achievement gaps, and they range from 23% to about 43%.
I'm sure. This is a clarify question.
Yeah.
Are the percentages, I don't know how to put this, percentages of the scores of white kids as a base, or is it percentile difference? In other words, if one was 80% and one was 60%?
You'd have a 20% gap.
A 20% gap, that's the difference.
Yeah. And then, so you can see, our highest achievement gaps are for black and Hispanic students. We have seen some increased trends in our Asian, black, and Hispanic students, and some decrease or downward trends for our American Indian students and students who are two or more races or multiracial. The next slides are actually going to be looking at some of our schools within, and this is all MCA III math data. So this is looking at some of our specific schools. The first one is looking at Falcon Heights. And you can see, the top graph is looking at their achievement gap over time, and then that's the percentage between their white students and black students. And then, the bottom graph is actually looking at their proficiency of each of those groups. So you can kind of see how those two play out in terms of their proficiency over time. So this one has like five years' worth of data. And typically, what I'm looking for is, I'm looking for an increase in both our white students and black students, hopefully seeing that accelerated growth. So you can see, over time, Falcon Heights has gone up and down for their white students, but a steady increase for their black students as well. And you can see that, at the top, you've seen a 47% gap going down to 35%, so continuously working on those. Go on to our next slide.
Is there any insight from that that we take with us?
Yeah, so I was talking with Falcon Heights, and they had said that they have been really working on giving extra instruction to, specifically for African-American students. And they've been looking at that as a part of their goal, how to increase and accelerate their proficiency. And so, many of those, many students there are getting that, kind of a second scoop of instruction in math. And also, they have been using an AmeriCorps math tutor that's been really helping, and actually was acknowledged, I guess, in the state AmeriCorps, or even the national AmeriCorps piece, too, that this person was honored or acknowledged in there, too.
So, a clarify question. So generally, when there's intervention like that, I mean, obviously, the AmeriCorps math is during the class day. Is all that activity during the normal school day, or is it after?
It is, yes. AmeriCorps has to happen during the school day.
But the other stuff, too, is all during the school day?
Yes, yes.
Or is it also, is not after school?
Nope, it's all during that school day. Thank you. Good question. So this is looking at Little Canada, so same type of thing. On the top end, you see the achievement gap reduction over time for Little Canada, and you can see that there's some different graphs that are happening in the bottom as well for proficiency. So kind of a strange U shape in the middle there, kind of a sideways U there where they're getting further away from each other and then coming back again. But over time, you are seeing that reduction over those five years. And as well as you see some increases in their white students over that period of time, there is some fluctuation within there as well. Go on to MAD Williams, and this is actually looking at their students who have an IEP or they are in special education, and compared to the non-special education students. And so you can see that the top one is the difference between special education students to non-special ed students, and you can see a nice reduction that they have been seeing. And also, then the bottom one is looking at how are their non-special education students in the green compared to special education students who are making some nice gains as This is looking at Harambe Elementary, and this is for math as well, looking at two different groups that have significantly reduced some of those gaps. And this is looking at our black students in the red, and then multiracial students in that greenish turquoise color. The top one, again, shows those gaps that are decreasing, and the bottom one is showing the proficiency that's increased. You can see black students have moved from the 35%, or 28% to about 15%, and multiracial students from about 35% to 3%. This is looking at Ross, and this is multiracial students compared to white students, again, looking at our gap over about three years of time that we have our data for. And you can see that, again, that top graph is looking at the achievement gap, and the bottom is looking at the proficiency.
Is there anything in particular inside across the different schools that will provide learning for us to apply to other schools?
Yes, I think, and this is for all of our schools, but what I heard from each of the schools as they talked is just that clear focus of the students that they're going to be working with. And many of them are having some kind of an intervention, maybe that's a small group of students, maybe it's a focus on, like at Ross, it's a focus on decreasing the Fs, and so how they're intervening with students to make sure that they are learning and making sure that they are, they're on track to pass a course, and getting those focused there. But in each one of them, it was a specific focus on, this was our goal, this was something that we had, we have a group of targeted students that we're going to be working with and making a difference for. So that was definitely things that I saw. The other thing was talking about collaborative teams. So as professional learning communities are working together, and their collaborative teams are really focused on their goals. We're going to move into some reading measures, and those, also, these, this is kind of the overall picture of, here's what our achievement gap looks like for the state overall in reading, and that's in that top left. So you can see the gaps range from about 14 percentage points to 33 percentage points. The highest gaps are for black and American Indian students. And then you can see some slight reduction over time, but not much moving. In Roseville is the bottom right, and looking at the district achievement gaps, they range from about 23% to 43%. Our highest gaps were black and Hispanic students. And you can see there is some reduction for multiracial students and American Indian students, without much change for black, Asian, or Hispanic students. So again, this is looking at a specific school. This is Little Canada, and there have three different groups that I had found there that are making some changes. So this is the, the top one shows those reductions in achievement gaps, from Asian students from 34% to 24%, for black students from 39% to 29%, and multiracial students from 28% to 15%. And then again, that bottom graph shows the increase in proficiency for each of those groups, while white students are also continuing to increase as well.
Just out of curiosity, if we have the dual immersion program there, is this including all the students?
Yes, yes. This is looking at Parkview Center School, and you can see their achievement gap over time for black students in reading. And also, so that's the top graph, looking at a reduction of about 40% to 37, and especially the, over the past year, where it was decreased from 42% to 37%, while also increasing their white students proficiency from 78% to 81%, and the students, black students from 39% to 44%. This is looking at Rams, and the top one is showing our Asian students and multiracial students. And this is looking at, from, our Asian students are moving from an achievement gap around 29% to 16%, and multiracial students from about 41% to 16%. And then again, you can see those bottom graphs that are showing our white students there in blue, multiracial students in turquoise, and then Asian students in that darker bluish Again, you can see that increase towards our white students, and also white students increasing over time as well. This is our last one of our schools, so this is looking at Ross overtime, Roseville area high school, and it's looking at our black and multiracial students. So you can see some difference in their gaps on the top one, and then on the bottom, you can see their proficiency increase as well. So black students from 30% to 35%, multiracial students from 13% to 46%, and then white students stayed about the same, so 72% to 71% about. And really, what I was looking for as I was digging through it is looking for schools that not, aren't closing it by, with white students going down and our students of color increasing. We want to see both things happening at the same time, accelerated growth and continued growth for all of our students. So these are just some of our K-12 measures, that you've seen these before, but it's just kind of putting them together in a package. And you'll see them again as we roll out our 18, 19 data with some of these. But this is looking at, one of the things that we look at while we look at our experience for all of our students, is how often our students are referred to the principal's office or to administration. And again, this is looking at all of our student groups by race, and seeing if they're getting to that proportionate amount. And what we would say is that proportionate amount of, is that 1.0. So that would be the, that amount that we would say this represents our students, our student population, and this is the amount of times that they have been referred to the office. And so we'd like to see that right around that 1.0, or even less than, right, because we don't want any of our students to be referred to the office, but we know that that happens. So we're looking to see if there's reductions that are happening within there. Yes.
Again, clarification. That would be per school year?
This is each school year that we look at, yeah.
And then, and describing then what unduplicated means?
Yeah, so unduplicated means they're just the individual students that were referred to the office, not the amount of times that they've been referred. And we will share that with you as well, but this one is just one student for being referred to the office. Thank you. And this is looking at the suspensions to the office, again, or referrals that maybe turn into a suspension. Again, we're looking for that 1.0 representation. This one, we have moved slightly for some of our black students, but much more work that we still need to do. And this is our, this is again, looking at proportionate amounts of, compared to our population, and again, looking for that 1.0. This is looking for our special education students to see, are we over-referring in any areas, are we under-referring for populations that may need some support? And as you see, over time, we're moving from a less proportionate to a more proportionate amount, especially, we see some, see some changes, some positive changes with our black, Hispanic, and American Indian students. These ones are specifically just towards high school. So some measures that we have, this is our overall district graduation percentages. You can see from 2014, and the most recent data that we have, thanks Frank, that's much better. For the more recent data that we have is, or the most recent graduation data that we have is 2018, you can see that trend over time is the five-year trend that we're looking at, four-year graduation rate, so I want to clarify that, but this is five years' worth of data. But we see increases in Asian, Hispanic, black students, and we also saw that white students saw a slight increase and mostly stable. We did see in that, this current year, or the most current year, a drop for our multiracial students.
Is that a very large N?
It is not a very large N, but it's probably about 150 students. But again, it's a new, it's a new measure that we've been looking at, so this is, we've only had two years of data for graduation, we'll have another one this upcoming year. So hopefully, we see some positive trends for that as well.
I'm not a numbers person, but it seems like that population is really kind of all over the board anyway, so...
Right, like we were talking about, small group of students at this point.
Yeah.
And then these are, this is our graduation percentages at, specifically at Roseville area high school. So we looked at the district, and then this is Roseville area high school. You can see some gap closure for our Asian, Hispanic, and black, as well as an increase for our white students. And this one is looking at who are the students that are taking what we would call college credit-bearing courses. And over time, these have been getting more and more proportionate. You can see that our strongest increase has been for our Hispanic students over time. Again, we're looking for that 1.0 representative amount, and I mean, we are coming very close to that. It's great progress that we see.
Question?
Yes.
Before we get too much further. Two slides back, you had the four-year.
Yes.
Do we have a five-year graduation?
We have, we have a four-year, all the way up to a seven-year graduation rate that we can track. But typically, what the state looks at is that four-year graduation rate. So a student that started in ninth grade, they would like to see them graduating by their senior year. We do have the improved, like when we see it beyond that fourth year, a fifth, a sixth, and a seventh year, you do see those graduation rates increase.
Right. So Jake, later in the year, when we give our graduation report, we do share?
Yes.
The different?
Yes, the different rates for overtime as well, yeah.
Okay. Just curious to see with the five-year.
This is our last slide for our look in, really, this is our ACT composite scores for the last three years, and I've only pulled the last three. We don't have 2019 yet. That'll be coming in our upcoming report. But these are, for 2016, 17, and 18, these are the years that we had all students take the test, where the state has been providing funding for students to take that, which started in 2016. So we have seen some increases for our students, but again, this one, we still need to continue our work. You did have a handout earlier, I believe, from Josh Collins, our communications director, and that was just a, he's going to put together a little card for you as well, so you can have a business card that shares some of our highlights of our data, or just information that you can take with you and have with you if people are asking about data. So we worked together on putting that together for you, so hopefully, that's a handy, handy little thing that you can use in a lot of your back pocket if you ever need. Again, there is going to be more data that comes with you, comes with our other reports, but this is kind of the first time for me to pull all of those different reports and kind of find different pieces that show how we are doing, and our different lenses and looks at our different gaps that we're looking at.
I found this exciting to read. It, clearly, we have, you know, ways to go, but we're seeing gems, and we're seeing things that are starting to move.
Yes.
Which we've been looking for, for a long time.
Yeah.
So that's really exciting.
Yeah.
And to see it all in one place kind of helps, I think, provide some perspective.
And when you see it as a whole aggregate, sometimes you don't get into that specific school data that I shared with you also. So you can see the overall, sometimes it doesn't look like there's much movement, but when you break it down by school, you can see some of those things that are happening with the trends. So that's, that's the exciting piece, too.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, yeah. And any feedback that you have beyond this, too, of other things, when you see my reports throughout the year, of things maybe we could add to this to make it a more interesting or sustainable report, would be great.
I'm really excited about having this to share with our community.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it kind of summarizes, it pulls together a lot of information, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that moves us to action items. The first item we have is a ward of sale of 7,285,000 GEO school building refunding bonds, Series 2019A.
Good evening. So yes, you had authorized the sale of refunding bonds back in September. Today was the sale date, and we have Jody Zespa from Ellers with us tonight. She's got a post, or a sale day report, and I think we have some very good news on the sale date, which will also include, and Jody will walk through this, that the amount on the bond, or on the sale, on the issuance changed due to premiums.
Yeah, so we do have great news from the sale this morning. We took bids at 11 o'clock, and you'll notice that the dollar amount is substantially lower. We got a premium bid, and you guys are used to me talking about that, because you got a premium bid on your school building bonds also. And we also were able to lock into a little bit higher interest rate on the escrow account. So Sherri was willing to have us move forward to take bids and act as a bidding agent, and we got four bids on the investment of the bond proceeds. So when we close on the bonds, there'll be a period of time until the end of January when you'll have those funds available, and we were able to kind of maximize the interest in that, and then reduce the amount of the bond amount for that reason, too. So we'll go through the reports. The Inside Front Cover shows that we're refinancing the 2010 B bonds, and you'll see the ratings that were assigned there. So you do participate in the Minnesota State Credit Enhancement Program, and they guarantee the payment of your debt should you not be able to make a payment, and so Moody's automatically assigns that nice high AA2 rating. Your underlying rating stayed the same, and we'll talk a little bit about the information that Moody's shared with us as part of their rating, the BAA1. Both Sherri and Aldo participated in the conference call with them, and I think provided helpful information, were able to answer a lot of their questions. There's certainly a lot of great things happening with respect to the school district, and they pointed those out and recognized it. It's really the narrow financial condition and the fund balance that is their concern and is what's keeping it at that level. So we did get three bids. Hutchinson Shaki out of Chicago was a low bidder at 1.51, basically, really close bids between the three bidders. So the high bid was just at 1.53. And you'll see in the notes there that we had estimated 1.82%. Short-term rates have been going up a little bit since we put the pre-sale report together, so I told Sherri, oh, I hope we're going to be able to get to that amount and have the savings that we planned, and we actually exceeded that. So we're about $74,000 higher than our estimates in the pre-sale report, so a little over $400,000 in savings, and it'll be about $85,000 in your debt, for a reduction in your debt service levy over the next five years. So you're not able to keep this money for your budget, you do need to pass it on and... So you're not able to keep this money for your budget, you do need to pass it on as savings directly to your taxpayers, but that's great news. So, nice to see that and to capture that savings for the taxpayers. We'll close on these bonds November 6th, so as I mentioned, then, when you, those proceeds will be put in escrow and locked into the interest rate that the, that we were able to get today on the bidding process. And then when these bonds are able to be called, which is February 1st, 2020, we'll use those proceeds to, to call your old bonds and pay those off. So there's a series of attachments. A lot of them are just updates to what we talked about in the pre-sale report, but the first one, attachments, page one, is labeled at the bottom there, is the bid tab. So again, Hutchinson Shaki with the interest rate of about 1.51% on the right-hand column there are the interest rates. Northland Securities out of Minneapolis was second bidder, and then Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. So, happy to see three bids. The attachments, page two, is an updated sources and uses schedule. So this is the same schedule that we talked about last month, just updated for the sale results now. You'll see that hot, that nice high premium amount that was provided to you from the winning bidder. Page three has not changed. That's your debt service schedule that you're committed to right now with 4% coupons. And then on page four, you'll see the debt service schedule now that you will be paying on going forward, 6.6 million. We will submit this information to Minnesota Department of Education, so you'll have a slight decrease in your property tax levy when you see that 40-page detailed report from MDE, that's an about-size four-fund. So when that comes out in December for your approval and after your truth and taxation meeting, you'll see a reduction in your debt service levy for the payment in the first year. So they will make that change when we provide them with the information. And you'll see the true interest cost, which is the rate that we award on again, at about 1.5%, and our estimate was 1.82. So, the favorite page then is attachments, page five, and that's the page that shows you the savings by year, and you're required to levy at 105% of your debt service payments each year, so that's why the reduction in your levy amounts to about $85,000 annually, starting with taxes payable in 2020, going through taxes payable in 2024. And then, page six is the refunding escrow, and if you have this page memorized from the pre-sale report, you'll know that there was an interest-earning amount of $17,062. So we were estimating that if you put your, if you put the money, the proceeds at closing, if you put it in a money market account, that's about probably what you would get over that period of time, because it's a short period of time. But with the bidding process today, we were able to get a 1.74%, so that additional $13,000 helped to bring down the size of the bond issue also. So I think that was a good move to move forward with that process. And then the rating report. So the first report, starting on attachments, page seven, is the press release that went out. So Moody's issues two reports, a press release, and a detailed credit opinion. So you'll see their ratings rationale in the second paragraph there, mentioning the, what they characterize as the very narrow fund balance in the liquidity, but then also mentioning the district's large tax base located within the economically strong Twin Cities area. Stable student enrollment is definitely a positive in their mind, of course, and then the elevated leverage driven by both debt and pension. And all of the school districts in the state of Minnesota get a comment about the pension because of the Teachers Retirement Association Plan, and how that's been not in great financial condition. They list the factors that could lead to an upgrade and a downgrade in this press release. And then if you turn to attachments, page 11, that's where the detailed credit opinion is provided. And again, listing the same credit strengths that we just talked about, the credit challenges, rating outlooks, what could lead to an upgrade and downgrade, and then lots of detailed information based upon their own research and research that we provided to them and that Aldo and Sherry provided as part of the call. So overall, turned out better than we expected, and we're hoping to be able to achieve what we had included in the pre-sale report, and actually got higher than that, so, good news.
Very exciting news. Are there any questions or comments?
I do have a question, and I'll ask it. I don't, I don't think it can be answered now. Maybe it's a future comeback. So the Moody's credit rating obviously affects the rate at which we can borrow money, affects what we get if we lend money, et cetera, et cetera, it's real money. And so, obviously, we're interested in trying to keep our credit rating as high as possible. And the one thing that we might have some control over is that fund balance.
Correct.
And I know that it's been a concern of us here at the Board for all the years I've been on the Board at least, how to get it up. But what about numbers or scales? The question is, what could actually positively affect that rating? In other words, if we've been consistently trying to shoot for a 3% fund balance? Let's say we did that consistently, is that enough? Or is that really immaterial, would we still be in the same boat? Should we, just for future thinking, you know, be looking at a higher target to really materially improve the Moody's rating?
Yeah, I think they see the 3% as very low, so I think they would be happy to see you achieve that target, but I think in order for there to be material movement in the credit rating, I would say that it's going to need to be at a higher level than that, so.
Would you be prepared to figure out what that higher level could be? Are we talking 4%, 5%, 6%? I just want realism.
Yeah, and I think what we would probably provide to you is they do have a list of, and I don't have that here with me, but they do have a list of medians, so what the fund balance amounts are for each of the different credit ratings, both in the state of Minnesota and then nationally. So, and we'd probably want to look at just school districts, because cities maintain their fund balances in general are much higher than school districts. So we probably want to look at the ratings and the medians, and kind of where the, where the districts are at each of these different credit rating levels, and they have that, and we can provide that to you.
Yeah, so again, maybe it's an ask for a future comeback, and to be specific, that to materially move the needle more positively on the rating.
Yeah.
What, what might a theoretical target be for our, for our reserves?
Right.
Thank you.
Yep, and I think the other thing that I would point you to that is included in their report already is the scorecard that they have on page 15. So you can see that, you know, they are rating your economy and tax base very high, so they're giving you a double-A rating in that category, and that counts toward 30% of your overall score. So you can see, you know, that your, the finances are really what are bringing the rating down, and they even give you another adjustment downward, because you're not even at the 3% target yet.
Yes, right.
So, yeah, we talked, it's almost like kicking you when you're down, it's like a double, you know.
Well, people might not understand, because it's so complicated, that, you know, if we have so many needs, if we have an extra buck or two.
I know.
Why would we put it in the fund balance? Why would we put it in the bank versus spend it to address some of the big issues we have? But with that fund balance as low as it is, it costs us real money, just in terms of the rating and the rates that we get. So it is important.
Right.
To keep that kind of a priority.
And can I explore that a little bit more? What does it cost us? Because we're actually paying the state rate. So what is the impact of the fact that our own district has a lower rate?
Yeah, so definitely the state credit enhancement rating helps you. Generally, in between any rating category, if you were a notch higher, let's say, which would be a single A3, it's usually five to 10 basis points that we see on a individual maturity that you would be saving if you were able to move up. So, you know, this is a shorter-term issue, so the rates maybe aren't quite as volatile, but, you know, we have a facilities maintenance bond issue coming up, and, you know, as you refinance debt in the future, so at, at any of those points in time, and they, you know, continue to review your rating, and they call Sherry pretty regularly, they stay on top of it, and do their surveillance, and issue, issue annual reports even if you're not borrowing. So, yeah, it is real money. So it's, that's a, that's kind of a rule of thumb as to how much improvement that would be in your interest rate if you were able to move that up a notch to a single A3, for example.
Great, and thank you. That was very informative. Do we have a, now this one calls for a roll call vote, so we're gonna need a resolution. We could have a motion for the resolution with the waiving of the reading of the resolution.
I move that we waive the reading of the resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay. So all favor of doing that.
Do we vote on that first? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. So, then I'll move that we adopt a resolution awarding a sale determining the form and details authorized in execution, delivery, and registration providing for the payment of your obligation refunding bond series 2019A.
Second.
Wonderful. All in favor, no roll call?
Oh, Director Azar.
Aye.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Chair Haggins.
Aye.
And Clerk Wuchusky votes aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. We just have one form for the chair and the clerk to sign, if you, I don't know if you're willing to do that now, or if you want to do it at the end of the.
Give it to Michelle, we'll get it at the end.
Got it, perfect. All right, thank you so much. Once again, appreciate the opportunity to be of service, we're happy that everything turned out so well.
Well, thank you for very helpful work for our district, much appreciated.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That moves us to the next agenda item, Policy 576, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs from School Grounds. This is a second reading, so we looked at that at our prior meeting.
That's correct.
And Dr. Lucien Mobley.
Hello, good evening, I'm Dr. Lysia Mobley. Good evening, Dr. Sikoli, Board Chair and members of the Board. This is the second reading, and we didn't have any recommendations or follow-up from the first reading, and so my ask is that we move forward with the second reading and approve the Policy 576.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Okay, we've approved the policy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for the public, that is something by law that we have to review every year, even if we don't make changes. So that moves us to board reports. Would you like to start, board reports?
I went to the 916 meeting last week, but I'm gonna wait and do my report at the next meeting, so I forgot my stuff at home.
Wonderful.
Two things. Some of us were able to attend the recent Roseberry Schools Foundation luncheon, where we heard, I thought, I thought a very exhilarating and inspirational address by Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan, which was very emotional for many folks in the crowd. She herself being an ex-school board member, also called out the hard work of school boards, so you had to pat her on the back for that. But she spoke, you know, certainly of the importance of groups like the Foundation and their mission in supporting the schools, and it was also particularly joyful, because during her talk, she also, in a very nice way, called out our own Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Michael Faber, as having been a student of his in her earlier life, and recalled, I think she said, him saying basically, "Miss Flanagan, why aren't you with us right now", that kind of thing. So, certainly, it was nice to hear that, and that they had that personal connection. So, once again, the luncheon was wonderful, and as dates come up for next year, I encourage anyone who could attend to do so next year to try to put that on their calendar. Second thing, again, many of us were able to attend the community update on the facility projects last week, held at Fairview. And the first thing, and I'm sure Dr. Sikoli will do this also, I'd just like to thank the public who showed up, because they were very committed, very interested, very engaged, offered many, many different suggestions and comments. I'd also like to thank and commend the architects and the designers who were there, because they did a good job of listening and acknowledging all, frankly, of the comments and the thoughts, the concerns that were, that were raised, and I know that their intent is to address those to the extent that they can within our budget, and it's appropriate. I'd also like to commend Dr. Sikoli and Cherry Thompson for their part also, in answering questions and helping address the group. In the end, I think it was very positive, even after the talk and after the breakout sessions had ended, many of the folks who were there, particularly from that area, that neighborhood, stayed and lingered and talked and spoke with folks individually and looked at the plans and things. So I, I think that even though their concerns at times were very passionate, in the end it was very positive, and I think reflected well both on the community engagement and on our response to the community, so those are my two things. Thank you.
I've got a few things. I attended last Monday, I think it was, there was a teacher workshop day, and I attended the professional development session at Central Park, which was put on by National Urban Alliance. It was a very stimulating and interesting presentation that was given, and I gained an insight from that, and how important this sort of thing is in keeping the esprit de corps of our teachers, and the very difficult and sometimes discouraging work that they do. So it's inspiring to, to have a day where you're actually working on, on new techniques and thinking about what you're doing, and having the support of an organization like the National Urban Alliance. I attended, along with Curtis, I think it was just the two of us, for school board members, the Minnesota Thursday Food Fest for local farm-to-school food and lunch. And Superintendent Sikoli was there, of course, which goes without saying. Also, very stimulating, wonderful to sit down and eat lunch with the first graders. That was, that was the real treat there, and, and to see food being procured locally, and the whole support structure for that. We had, we had a lot of legislators and people from all levels of government, right up to federal level, state, federal, local, participating in that, and it was quite inspiring to see, and the kudos that, that little Canada got, and we had the principal sorting the garbage at the end. I thought that was a great touch. Does he always do that?
Every day.
That is, that is fantastic. I thought, I thought he might be just doing it as show, but the way he was doing it showed a kind of competence with it, that, that you can't just, you can't just step up and do that. I also attended the EAC, which is, what is that? The Community Education Advisory Council, I think I got that right, last week, where we talked about more community engagement in community education and ways of doing that, and trying to get more people to come to our meetings and to give us ideas, and so we'll be working on that. It was quite an exciting meeting, actually, and that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I can only echo my thought about the Fairview Community Meeting. It was, it was really great for, it was packed, and it's just so nice that, you know, so many people care, so. So I'd like to thank everybody for, for coming out for that. I attended Duped Roseville, had a resource volunteer fair at Fairview Community Center, and it was a rainy day, so not as many people showed up, but it was, I believe it was their fifth year that they'd done this, and it was, for those of us who were able to make it, it was a really, it was really well-done. Roseville Area School, the senior center was there, just a number of groups, so, hope they do it again next year. The Roseberry Area School Foundation Luncheon, said basically everything I was gonna say about that. Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan, bless you. Special shout-out to her, she was, her story, you know, about her upbringing, and, you know, how you go from a school board member to Lieutenant Governor. Just very impressive, the, we did also have representatives from our leaders in training there also, who were also able to get some time with Lieutenant Governor, so I thank her for that, because that's, that's important. Dr. Faber and I both attended the American Indian Parent Group, so thank you for, for that. And, little different, little different meeting than, than usual, and it was good. You know, normally, there's a, there's, you know, a shared meal and the discussion of pertinent topics, but this time, they, they brought in an elder to share stories, and I, I think it's safe to say that, you know, we both found that, you know, fairly fascinating. And then we wrapped Sage, which I still have. And then we wrapped Sage, which I still have at my house. So I actually plan to use that this weekend because I'm not supposed to hold on to it. The, attended the AMSD meeting and had two guests this time, but I will concentrate on one. Rachel Dane, who's the 2020 Census Project Manager for Minnesota Department of Administration, told us a number of really great things, including Census Day is April 1st. Now really it is April 1st, you know, can't make it up. One of the things that she was really adamant about was undercounting. That's, that's a really big thing. It was projected that in 2010, an estimated 1.3 million kids were not counted. This is the, this is the first year that the census will be digital. It will only be 10 questions. And so they're looking for help from a number of sources, including schools, to help get the word out. So, you know, there are a number of programs that specifically use census data. Five that affect us specifically include National School Lunch Program, Head Start, School Breakfast Program, Sherman's Health Insurance Program, CHIP, Special Education Grants in Supporting Effective Instruction State Grants. So we've got a lot of work to do. See, it's Anti-Bullying Month. There's going to be some things going out across the district to address that. Also, it is Farm-to-School Month, which is why we had our meeting over at Little Canada. And so I want to specifically thank Kirsten Sager from Minnesota School, Garden Coalition, Congressman Betty McCollum, Representative Minnesota, House Representative Jamie Becker Phan, Minnesota Senator Jason Isaacson, our representatives from Minnesota Department of Agriculture. And of course, our Nutrition Services Supervisor Angela Rishie put on a really great program. And, you know, this was, the second time I was able to, you know, participate in it first Thursday, Minnesota Thursday. And it's, it's a really great program and the kids absolutely love the food, which is really important because if they, if they don't eat it, then what's the point? So also the homecoming, the game, and that was, it didn't turn out great for the Raiders, but they tried really hard and it's really appreciated. And I think everybody had, had a good time. So along those lines. If you love your melon, this is a Love Your Melon hat, okay? And this, what's special about this one, it has the Roseville insignia on it. So if you want one of these hats, you have one chance left, okay? If you go to the next, the next home football game at Roseville Area High School, you too can buy one of these hats, okay? Because I'm not giving this one up, all right? But if you don't like the pom-pom, it comes out. So it's all good. I found this out, October 16th is the next year, next, next home game. I found this out because I have a new dog and, and she likes to chew things and she was running off with my dog. Okay, so that is a, that's a good thing. So things coming up. This Saturday, the Minnesota Robotics Invitational, our own Fire Bears will be showing everybody how it's done. Please go, it's free, it's fun, you'll love it. EDW Carnival is this Friday, October 11th. It's Carnival, it's fun, games. Go, support the schools. College Information Night, October 15th at Roseville Area High School. Used to be called College Night for Juniors. Now it's basically college information for freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors, although most of it is about, you know, juniors. But that's 6:00 PM, Roseville Area High School. October 10th, along the lines of Farm-to-School Month, is the, at noon, the Great Lakes Great Apple Crunch. So this summer, we had the cucumber crunch. And for those who missed that, it was really good. So you have a chance now to do it with apples. So that's this Thursday. And that's it.
Thank you. I have a brief report. Yesterday, we had the Parkview Groundbreaking. They had technically already started, but we had the official groundbreaking yesterday. And the students did a great job as always. They had some from all the different age groups and we had a number of folks from the city as well as the school district and had a beautiful day to get that building started. And it's very exciting, the kind of changes that they'll be doing. And as always, we want to again thank the community for having passed that referendum and making those kind of improvements in the school possible. We are very fortunate to have that kind of support in our community. And then today, I actually got to see kind of the other end of the process for updating the buildings, got to go on the Edgerton tour, where we got to see the different facilities. They had new cafeteria, the secure office, the updated special ed facilities, the classroom, a variety of different things. And it's just really impressive to see the quality of the new facilities and how that really adds to the educational experience of our students. So I want to make sure to thank the community for that as well. Okay, having completed the agenda.
One more thing, so sorry. Director Azar and her daughters went to Run Like a Girl 5K.
Oh, they did. Oh, come on, it was amazing. Run Like a Girl. All right. Okay, so ready? Okay, having completed the agenda for us, I adjourn the meeting. We'll take a five-minute break and then we will begin our study session.